I'll call to order this reg, or me, in Nelson County Schools on March 20th, 2018, at 5:00 PM. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board Mission Statement, the Nelson County Board of Education, Representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children, pledges to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting visionary direction to effective policy, oversight, and efficient resource management. The District Vision Statement, quality education now, learning for life. Item two on the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
Sir.
Okay, we'll go on into item three then, which is student and shareholder engagement, and 3A is student performance. Ms. Brown?
Yes, we're glad today to have representation from Boston School, and Ms. Cole, please come forward.
Well, tonight, I'm really, really excited because I'm so proud of these guys, I can't barely contain it, but they sacrificed a few things to all be here. There were three different groups who built cities as part of a competition earlier this year, and when I saw it, I said, "We have to bring that to the Board," because it's part of a STEM class that Ms. Amanda Tucker teaches as an elective, and these are all eighth graders, and you really want to hear from them more than me, but they were going to talk to you about some of the things that they did in the design of the city. They were talking about planning and zoning laws, and they had an engineer come several times as an outside partner to work with their classroom, to give them feedback on the cities that they created. I walked in one day, and they were actually designing these on computer modules, and I said, "Hey," to this young man here in the green, "Hey, Mike, what are you guys working on?" He said something about, "We're checking our zoning laws," and I'm thinking, "Wow." And so, I was intrigued, and I spent a lot of time visiting and watching the evolution of this project, and I'm so excited to introduce you Grace Maravella, Josh Carter, Mike Weed, this is Lane Hoyes, you'll meet him just a little bit too, and Brianna Wibbles, and Brooks Balding, who is a fantastic, trace first through to she came to us as an eighth grader. Most of these guys have been with us since kindergarten forever, but we've got, Brooke was a Golden Gate from, was it Barstown we came from? We stole from Barstown, and we're so glad to have all these guys. So, you guys come forth, and I think Grace is going to lead in sharing what, so Grace, if you want to come to the mic, so you can be loud, and the rest of you guys get up, cheer your city. You can, oh, you can. Will this microphone come out?
Yes.
Is it wireless?
It needs to point and shout.
Go over there and point and shout.
Hi, my name is Grace Maravella, and this is our city, Arcadia. We're going to start off right in the center of it all, which is the Recreation Center. In the Recreation Center, we have many things for all of the citizens. We have multi-purpose fields for sports, a community pool, a track, and a spa. This city is supposed to be age-friendly, and we want it to be age-friendly for all ages, and especially seniors. We have the mayor's house, so they can get to the Recreation Center if there's any problems. We have our buildings for the houses and apartment buildings. This is so that they can get to the Recreation Center and the stores faster, so it can be better for transportation. We have a hospital right beside the people, so they can get there faster and get them taken care of. And right behind that, we have the school, so it will be easy travel to the school. We have the fire department, so that the fire department can get to the houses and the residents easier. We have the stores, so that the residents can get to them, and we have the town hall there, because that's used a lot for residents. And then, we have the factories as far away from the residents as possible, because we don't want them to have the inconvenience of the smell and the noise, and it was convenient to have them near the back. Behind that, we have our farms, where we get our fresh crops for food. We also have our water towers, and for our energy, we wanted alternative energy, so we have these arches, which have solar panels through the whole thing, and we have windmills. And Arcadia is located in Estonia, and is right beside Egg Mountain, and now no one's going to do transportation.
Okay, so, these like weird looking elevated things on top of our roads, it's called Maglev. A Maglev is a system of train transportation that uses two magnets, one to lift it up off the track, to float it, and then another to repel it across the track. Using the advantage of no friction, since it's not actually touching the track, it can reach 600 miles per hour in under 15 seconds, and because of the easy access circular design of our city, you can be at your next destination in under 10 seconds. So, our residents will simply just walk or drive to their next destination, or into another Maglev station, and just go to their next destination.
Like with what Grace said, all our energy mainly comes from windmills and our solar panels, they're spread out throughout the city. But also with where our wire comes from, we also use hydroelectric generators, which use water to create a renewable energy source, that's better to use with, if you want to keep your environment safe and stuff like that. Back to Grace.
A few things that were added in at last moment. Our windmills have heating, so that when it's cold, because of the winters in Estonia are pretty wild, someone is cold, so that we have an alternative energy source. We also have water mills near our river that we have near here, and we have moving sidewalks, which are really unique. So, you get on them, you set your rate at which you want to go, and then it cannot go above 30 miles per hour, because you'll be standing on it. It has a 10-second waiting area, so it waits 10 seconds, and then it starts, and then whenever you're done, you can just push stop, and then it will stop, and it moves out of the way, so the rest can keep going. Moves out of the way, you get off, and once all the wait is taken off, it waits 10 seconds, and then moves on with the rest of them. And that's our city. We had a different city, ours was Kimball. We had the Maglev like Grace and them. We did have our windows, I think, we had a heat sensing windows. It wouldn't let so much sunlight in, where it was so hot, and it detected how much heat was coming in.
We also had, I think they liked devices where the elderly, if they was to have a medical condition or something, that it would keep track of that, so say if they had a heart attack, then officials would be...
Our last activity was our carpet we had in the elders' house. We didn't make them have it, we would ask them, and it censored if they didn't move for 24 hours, immediate camera would be out there to help them.
One more thing that I want to say is that this young lady, it was a snow day, and she somehow got grandpa to drop her off at school, because it was a best day, actually, and she, I went down to Ms. Tucker's room, and who's down there painting, working, building this model. Because firstly, generated them on computer models, and they did have a lot of parameters, and we did ask a lot of challenging questions to help them develop these cities, because when they said, "Oh, you know, we've got these moving sidewalks and all this easy transportation," we said, "What about the young people who need to exercise?" They have some facilities for that as well, but there were three different cities, and you just got to enjoy two. And if you have any questions for these guys, then they probably could tell you a lot, and I think they're well advanced in planning and zoning and other design elements.
So, yeah, I've got a question. So, I heard you say that there were a lot of parameters, so that, I mean, you had a list of things that you had to take into consideration? What's a few of them? You don't have to say them all, but what's a couple of them?
It was age-friendly, one of them.
The model had to be built under $100.
Okay.
Nothing can be taller than 20 inches?
It was 24.
24 by?
It was 60 inches, like, in length, and it was 24 in width.
Our buildings couldn't be over 20 feet, 20 inches.
Made a scale.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had to scale everything.
So, something I heard, both in this model here, as well as the one you were describing, I heard a lot of things that were about energy efficiency, new energy technologies, solar panels, windmills, all of that kind of stuff. So, why did you go that route versus traditional, you know, coal-fired plants, or, you know, things that we all are used to right now?
We were with the energy efficiency, because this model is supposed to take place 100 years in the future, and we always know that our renewable resources will always be there, because they're renewable, whereas with our non-renewable, we never know, it might disappear off the face of the earth.
You all have done that in a ballpark. Good job.
Hey, I myself like to deal with the old people.
We resemble that remarkably.
You know, you need to go check on them. That's good.
You need each wonderful button.
Why not?
Follow that.
You forget about that one. We had a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun. Thank you very much.
Great job.
Good job, great job.
All right, now, I feel really confident with these people taking over and being in charge of our... Our good news reader is... Our good news reader this evening is Mr. Lane Hoyes, and as soon as they carry this, he's an eighth grader.
To date, there have been a total of 330 online Apex courses completed by students of the academy, with 104 courses complete this semester. At a debate convention that was held in Lexington, Bloomfield Elementary had the following students who placed. Fifth place mascot was Charles Buckman. Fourth place book battle was Kayden Harden, Cheyenne Bailey, and Jacob Willett. National qualifiers include third place science, Carson Keeling; third place language arts, Ally O'Brien; third place advertising design, Addie Avis and Olivia Morris; third place banner, Emily Sanders, Olivia Morris, and Scarlett Williams; and third place t-shirt design was Scarlett Williams. Bloomfield Middle School SCLP will be competing in the state championship on March 29th. Seventh and eighth graders' band will be competing on March 28th in Hardin County. The Boston Middle School team advances Sawyer Boone to compete in the math assessment on March 17th. Our elementary academic team took second overall in the district governor's club on February 10th. The FPS team, which includes Kaye Bendingfield, Bernard Ford Pedego, Kenzie Floyd, and Wyatt Carter, took first place. Addison Cole placed fifth. Sophia Pimental-Ponche placed second, and Charles Bowling placed first in ring competition. Kenzie Floyd placed fifth in math. Brianna Cawthon placed third, and Jonathan Jimmison placed fourth in language arts. Chloe Hall placed fifth in arts and humanities, and the FPS team took third place in regional FPS competition earlier this month. Cox's Creek Elementary raised over $1,200 for the WHAS Crusade for Children. Future Problem Solvers placed first in the district competition. Every grade level is implementing a spring project-based learning unit. Some of these include an entrepreneur fair, an area and perimeter unit, where students will create a garden for our school, and a fifth-grade writing/art showcase. Students at the Early Learning Center enjoyed going on leprechaun hunts, searching for the pot of gold. Ms. Katie's class found all the clues with rhyming words, and their pot of gold was hidden in the classroom. Ms. Christia and Ms. Jessica's class is learning and adding, learning to add and subtract with dice and cat and hat. Students are enjoying taking a book home to read with the family from our lending library. Our lending library was made possible through the WHAS grant, and we are thankful for their support. Foster Heights first grade students and Ms. Miles and Ms. Katanzarito's class participated in passion projects, requiring them to research a topic of their choice and present their learning to their peers and Foster Heights families. Congratulations to the Nelson County High School student Laura Philphott, who was invited to attend craft engagement academics. Laura will attend Gaten for fall. New Haven will host theme day on Friday before spring break. Students will spend the day traveling throughout the school, visiting various theme centers. Kaylee Urban earned first place on the Arts and Humanities Written Assessment, and Lawson Schrenecki earned second place on the Social Studies Written Assessment at the Regional Academic Team Competition. They will both move on to compete at the state level on Sunday. March 18th, Reagan Trzok was chosen by Ms. Potter to represent family resource as a legislative page in Frankford on March 1st. Zachary Moore and Skylar Heron advances individuals to the state tournament, state archery tournament. Congratulations to Meredith Bradford, who will be representing Thomas Nelson High School at the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Conference this June.
Thank you. Obviously, a lot has been going on in the district over the past month, and Ms. Brown, I don't know whether it might be on next month or not, but whenever I saw that last piece about the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership representative, it made me think of an article that was in the Standard, what, just about a week ago, sometime in the last week, that a student from each high school also has been selected to attend the Gatten Academy in Western.
That will be on April's.
Okay, okay. So, at this point, and of course, parents and the students that are here from Boston, we appreciate you all, if anybody thinks they may have homework, or if anybody's interested in going home for a snow dance. You know, feel free if you need to leave now, because we want to make sure that you're able to get on with your evening. If not, you're more than welcome to stay, but just want to give you that opportunity if you feel like you need to kind of slip out. As anybody is slipping out, we'll go on and also move to item 3C on the Nelson County, on the agenda, which is the Nelson County Schools Community Support Incorporated, which is Ms. White.
Thank you so much, and I would like to start out by inviting you. We have an event coming up, if you would pass it around, please. And obviously, we have plenty of those for any parents or anyone else who would like to attend the event. It's going to be on Thursday, April 26th. We're going to give a tour of Nelson County High School, starting at 5:00 PM. Then, we're going to have an informal meal at 5:30, and followed up with our program, beginning at 6:30. So, the foundation would like to invite you individually, and would love to see you there. And just want to go over some things that we just discussed. We actually just come from our board meeting, and we have just recently formed a partnership with our Early Learning Center, and with the Early Learning Center and Ann Marie Williams, we've worked closely with her in the last month to put together a program. We're going to encourage people to give to that program as well with the foundation, and we're going to have the foundation also put in with that program. They've had some budget cuts through the state, as most of you are aware of, and so that's one thing that we're trying to overcome, and those young people need it just as much as our seniors. We have invited 393 seniors to our senior alumni night, and we have invited about another 200 alumni. If we get half that many, I would be thrilled to have them there, but we have grown from the three scholarships that we originally started with, and we have grown to this year, we have eleven that we'll be giving away, and those are from various different sources, and we're continuing to try to get that excitement going, and having every year more and more scholarships to give away. We're also giving away the T. Gerald Florence Award. That's an award that has been given starting back in the year 2000, and then they have, you know, we're picking up again this year, and that'll be given away that night. If you have someone that has graduated from the Nelson County School System, they must be a Nelson County Schools graduate, we would appreciate you turning them in that nomination, and we're asking all the different principals at the different schools to turn in someone. They have so much exposure, that they're going to have maybe some folks that they would like to turn in as well. We've also run that in the Standard, so that form is available online, or it is available, you know, we have it in a card copy, too. We are currently, our total donations and grants for the year are at $7,070, and just to show you how much we have grown, I look back to 2016, we were at $2,065. So, those are grants and different donations that have been made through the foundation, so we're growing there. We also have a lot of requests for grants that are still open. We have received grant money from Town and Country, from BCD, and then from GBA, we received InKind, the beautiful invitations that you had in front of you. Those are from GBA, a local company that we have dealt with for years. They make us look good, no matter what they do, so we're very happy to have that taken care of for us. They even did the mailing for us. They have a mailing service now, and so they took care of mailing out those 393, so we didn't have to do it. So, we really appreciate that, and appreciate all our businesses that are participating with us. Again, the Senior Alumni Night is on Thursday, April 26th, at Thomas Nelson High School. We would really appreciate you being there if you could. Our gaming account summary for the year is at $14,584, and our general account summary is at $102,831. So, we are growing. It's slow, but it's coming, and so if you have any questions for me, or anything you would like me to discuss further.
Just commend you and the board on recognizing that preschool, the Early Learning Center also is an integral part here within the school system. I mean, I think we've all talked about that in the past, that it all starts at preschool levels, so that assistance and recognition from them too is greatly welcomed.
Well, Ann Marie Williams came to me and asked, you know, if we'd be interested in this partnership. We have gone from there, we've talked to Kiwanis, we have plans to talk to Rotary and every other organization that will allow us to come in. She has a wonderful presentation that she gives, and if you have not been through that facility lately, since they did the addition, it is just a beautiful facility, and now they're going to have wraparound childcare, so you can drop your child off in the morning, and they do have a bus system that as much transportation as we can, we will provide, but that's something that we felt this very would file through the foundation to work with as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. White, appreciate you. Moving on to item 3D, the superintendent search process. Ms. Seg.
I'll be brief for, we do have some time to spend together later on tonight. I am able to, as you've seen publicly, report to you, get 20 applicants for your position, and the screening committee did a lot of work, and it's prepared a recommendation to be brought to you this evening, we'll be considering that, plus processes for moving forward. We really are on the home stretch now, and so looking forward to that time with you all later on this evening, and I will report a lot of things during that time.
So, just so that we can make sure for the public that they understand, of course, tonight, there's no decisions being made.
That's correct.
Other than, you know, the next steps in this process, the course of setting up interviews, we are still probably on schedule for the April board meeting, give or take?
You are. The timeline really is tight, it's really on target right now. Fairly soon, your decision about finalists will be public, so the steps that we have asked from very beginning are starting to come for us.
Appreciate, appreciate the work that you're doing as well.
Support, you've helped a lot.
Moving on to item number four, operations and consent agenda. We have information, personnel actions, treasurer's report, bills and claims, MUMS report, leaves of absence, minutes from previous meetings, fundraiser requests, overnight out-of-state trips, and also a second reading on policy 09.12, which our member has to do with admissions and attendance. Remember I?
Yes.
Which we've all received this as part of our board agenda packet, so that we can review it.
And then, motion?
Motion by Ms. Breeding to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Ms. Berry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number five, which is Efficient Resource Management, 5A, Facilities Update, and the first item, 5A1, is a Thomas Nelson High School Change Order Number 14. Mr. Hawkins?
Well, if it appears that this is a little late in arriving to you all, you'd be right. You might recall, we've talked many times over the last couple of years, three years maybe, about the process and the school district, these public projects, and the paperwork always lags the actual activity. You might even recall discussing this particular change order many months ago, but we can't bring actual documentation to the board for approval until the contractor and our construction management firm and our architect get this sort of paperwork together. We received that in the last month, didn't have it in time for the February board meeting, but we are bringing it to you tonight, and we're asking that you approve this final change order, which is change order number 14 for Thomas Nelson Phase 3, the auditorium, and then I have an accompanying request that will follow it, that is the final BG4, wrapping up that project. You may even recall, again, many months ago, we approved every single BG4 for this project except this one. There was some missing paperwork, we pulled it from the agenda, and it just took a while for them to gather this sort of paperwork, so we're back to you tonight, just to refresh the change orders for a little less than $1,000, to change the sidewalk around the auditorium from pea gravel to regular concrete. Would ask for your approval.
So, then we would need a motion for change order 14 with M and J Construction for replacement pea gravel with the concrete sidewalk around the auditorium.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry.
Second.
Second by Ms. Breeding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then, moving on to 5A2, the BG4 for Thomas Nelson High School.
Once again, this is the last document of all the many dozens and dozens of documents you all have approved for both of those projects over the last two, three years, for the Early Learning Center and Thomas Nelson, they're those two simultaneous projects, and this is the final BG4. Essentially, we send this to Frankfurt, to the Department of Education, it's saying we're finished with this project, and I would ask for your approval.
So, then we would need a motion to approve the BG4 for the bid package two for the Thomas Nelson High School project, which will officially close out everything on that project.
I believe that's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
For those that don't remember, the final project is the auditorium.
I'm glad you said that. I had dinner with some folks last night, and they had a son that attended Thomas Nelson, graduated a few years ago, never got a chance to go in the auditorium, but they, for some, they had a reason to be there, recently, last few days, and complimented the district on how nice that facility was. If folks in the audience have not had a chance to see it, I would encourage them to go see it. It is a beautiful facility for our students.
So, I think Mr. Dickerson made a motion to approve this BG4 for bid package two.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. One quick question, so in the hoping that this is the last of it, which I think it is, so off the top of your head, do you know how close we came to that original estimated construction cost?
I know that our change order total on this project, and this is a three to three-and-a-half million dollar project, was less than $100,000. So, we significantly less, I don't know the exact total, but I can email that.
Somewhere between 1% and 10%.
It was around 1% last time I got the total, so 1% in a $3 million project. And you might recall, we had a similar percentage of change orders with ELC projects, so both of those projects went very well. Now, I think that speaks highly of our staff, Todd and Kevin, and our maintenance guys working with contractors and architects. They're the guys that are really getting, helping to make sure that gets done. Good communication minimizes those change orders. Good planning and communication along the way.
I think that's the key piece. Like you just said, I mean, how nice that facility is now. And to have a 1% approximately amount of change orders, I mean, it does go towards both our folks, but also, I mean, BCD's been a great partner. Stephen Ward and Studio Kramer, they've been great partners as well to design and to maintain the cost on that.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Item 5B, which is the CEP update, Ms. Thompson's Community Eligibility Provision Recommendation.
Hello. Yes, normally, we would visit the CEP potential for schools in April. But due to some of the things going on with ELC and registration right around the bend, it was suggested that maybe I bring this to you slightly earlier and let you know the potential for our Early Learning Center going CEP. CEP is the Community Eligibility Provision, which allows for our schools to feed our students breakfast and lunch at no charge. And the numbers for ELC are looking really good. So I included in your information, you know, what was CEP, the benefits, and how community eligibility works for those that are new. But also, if you don't want to go into that, I can go straight into the beef of this and what the numbers are. Potential, potential claiming percentage for Nelson County Early Learning Center is, presently, we have four schools, Bloomfield Elementary, Boston, New Haven, and the Academy that are CEP. And presently, that, this rate was set back in school year 15, 16. It's a four-year rate. So we're locked into that. So this would be a new rate, and you would group the schools. I suggest grouping the school totally separate, so that you can still get, these four that are grouped together, still get that same reimbursement rate. Presently, we go back just a minute, sorry. The claiming percentage for our four group schools right now is 85.33%, which means that we get federal reimbursement for, at the free rate, for 85.33% of the children that we feed at these four schools. And then we get, the remaining percentage, we get at the paid rate. So the children, how we get CEP numbers is determined by how many children are on K-TAP, TANF, SNAP, Medicare, or if they're foster, migrant, or runaway children. And this is compared to the total enrollment in those schools. So those schools, this is locked in, and still we have this rate for another year. The potential for the Early Learning Center now is that presently, as of today, we have identified 164 students that are on K-TAP, TANF, SNAP, Medicaid, or foster, migrant, runaway students. And then we have 301 total enrollment. So when you figure the total reimbursement rate, it would even be higher than we're presently getting for the other four schools, which would be 87.17%. I included in this three different, this is a CEP estimator that is created. I know it's really small. There is another attachment that you can actually have this tool and you can manipulate it. This first one is with no increase in participation. If we had the same participation in breakfast and lunch that we have right now, and we went CEP in that school, then we would, it shows that we would, sorry. We would lose $44.43 if we went full CEP. And this is for a month. If we, next slide. If we went and we had a 10% increased participation, and I definitely think that it would go up, presently, lunch is at 62% participation, breakfast is at 68%. Our other schools that are CEP, the highest is at 86% participation. So between enrollment hopefully going up and participation going up, that would mean our federal reimbursement would go up. So in this estimator, I did a 10% increase in participation, and that had us at a net difference of a positive $445. I did another one at 15%, and the net difference there with increased participation would be 14, around $1,400 increase in revenue for one month. So I wanted to leave that, give this to you all, this information a little earlier than normal. We won't actually, it won't be set in stone until March 30th. That's when we truly pull that number, that day, and we report to the state on April 1st.
Thank you, Bill. So, so then before we leave, will we need a motion to approve going to Community Eligibility Provision for the Early Learning Center?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And, and again, it looks like from those three scenarios you played out there, if it stayed the same, while we never want to go negative on funding, it seems like it's a very, very slender amount.
Right.
I think you said roughly $45 per month.
Right.
Times nine months. I mean, you're talking about $450 over the course of a year.
Right.
If it stayed the same.
Exactly.
But you're typically, though, I think what we've seen, what you said, is that those participation rates decrease.
Yes.
And so whether it's a 5%, 10%, or 15%, or whatever number.
Right.
It looks like there will be potentially a positive on the bottom dollar amount then.
Yes.
And we think this will be a big boost to our total program at the, at preschool and everything. We're very happy that this is working out like this, because basically, in layman's terms, everyone there is going to eat free breakfast, two meals a day.
Right.
And that's important.
And, and the success that we've had at, I think you said, Bloomfield Elementary, Boston, New Haven, and the Horizons Academy?
Right.
We possibly can see some of those same successes by doing this at the Early Learning Center.
Yes, definitely.
The one comment that I would have would be if there was a way to educate the parents to help them understand that, you know, packing my child's lunch might hurt a child, that, you know, it takes away the free lunch for everybody to some extent. That participation, even from children who might not necessarily have been on a free lunch or get free lunch, but that the more that participate, the stronger the program is. I don't know if there is a way to communicate that to where it's generally understood that, you know, it's a, just because lunch is free doesn't mean, well, now I can afford to pack my child's lunch. It, that it is a, the more that take advantage of the free lunch, the better the program is for everybody.
Yes.
Across the house.
Yes.
So if that could be kind of, because I think I just figured, some of us just kind of figured that out on our own. And I think if some people were just literally told that.
Right.
That they would make a decision to not pack their child's lunch and let them eat the free lunch, simply because it seems to me the right thing to do.
And I think Ms. Williams is already putting that on, she, she's here, but she's using it as her, as part of her advertisement.
Okay.
For the registration in preschool.
That's why we were doing this a little earlier, just so we could...
So, so then we will need a motion to approve the Early Learning Center to participate in the Community Eligibility Provision for the 2018-2019 school year.
I'll make the motion for that.
Motion by Ms. Dye.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Breeding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for your work on this, Ms. Thompson.
Yeah, this is a, this is another feather in this whole program of improvements at the Early Learning Center.
That's a win-win.
Absolutely.
Right.
Item 5C, the 2018-2019 district calendar update and setting graduation date. Mr. Morris? You doing dance for snow, didn't you?
Mine's a fun one. I'm going outside and doing an anti-snow dance, unless you approve this. We have one makeup day left on the calendar that we don't have to change anything with, and that's the day I bring it to you today for Monday, the 12th, May the 25th. And that was the half a day we had scheduled for teachers to close. So we'll still have that half a day. We'll just move that until, you know, that, next week, teachers come back in for their half a closed day, because that's part of their contract that we pay them for. Also, on this same one, just because it all kind of goes together, we're asking to go ahead and set the graduation date to May the 25th, all hopeful that we won't have to change anything. 5:30 for Nelson County High School and 7:30 for Thomas Nelson, as we've left them each year to make it more fair. And we, Mr. Brown and I have talked, if this weather does come, I'm sure that's on your mind, that we still have enough hours banked that we could do a two-hour delay and not get any issues. Or if weather not permitting a two-hour delay, we could still do another NTI day. So hopefully, one more will be all we need, and we still have some wiggle room for that.
We can use up to 10 NTI or best days a year, and we've only used four?
Yes. So we've still got some pushing that way. We don't want to have any makeup days.
So, so even if we had to go, even if it was the rest of this week, we could, we could still make it with the bank hours and/or the NTI best.
Providing the weather allows us to safely get our staff in, we can have NTI day. And I, I don't think we're going to get too bad for that in this weather.
The, I, I know, I think isn't the 25th a Friday?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? And so we typically try to have graduation be on a Friday evening for family outside of the community coming in, so it could be a three-day weekend of celebration for them as a family. And also for any of us old folks that do Project Grad that need to recoup the next morning.
It was a better situation where we did not have school that day for all the things that we know go on at graduation. But unfortunately, we don't have a choice unless we move graduation, so it's why we chose to ask you for the 20th and like that.
And I think the next Monday's Memorial, yeah, Memorial Day, right?
Yes, sir.
This would get us out if all goes right before Memorial Day.
That's our goal.
Okay. So then we would need a motion, and it's a two-parter, it looks like here, one of them being that we make up the missed date of March 12th on Friday, May 25th, which would then be the last day of school, that the teachers would be coming back on May 29th, the next Tuesday, for their half-day closing day. But then also to approve the date and times for graduation, May 25th at 5:30 PM for Nelson County High School and May 25th at 7:30 PM for Thomas Nelson High School.
Make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding.
Second.
Second by Ms. Berry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Go do your anti-snow dance. Item 5D, the Family Resource Youth Service Center continuation plans. Ms. Williams?
In your pockets, you receive the continuation plans. And each year, the Family Resource has conducted a survey, and they do a needs assessment with each of their centers. They conduct that with parents. Then after the assessment, they analyze the results and they sort of prioritize the needs with their centers. They then take their budgets and they develop a plan and they set goals with each school. They present those goals before the site-based councils at each school, and they develop their continuation plans. And so you have those in front of you, and I just need approval of those plans.
All right, while you can, if you'd like to. So the, if there aren't any questions then about those plans for our Family Resource Youth Service Centers, we would need a motion to approve the 2018-2019 continuation plans as presented.
And I make a motion to approve the 18-19 Whiskey Continuation Plan as presented.
A motion by Ms. Berry. Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Moving into item six, college and career readiness. First item is the Nelson County Schools Personalized Blended Learning Programs. Ms. Brown and Mr. Lettich.
Before they get started, this is something we started working on in August. And we, and they've come up with a really good plan that I'm real pleased about. I think when they present, you'll understand why. And we have a target group that we're going to be targeting in this. So I think it's a great idea and a great plan for the district.
So, Hendrick, this presentation in two parts. I'll review some facts with you, and then Ms. Brown will talk about the bridge from side. So some of the information that I wanted you to be aware of and sort of drove what we're trying to work for is, we ended the 16-17 school year with 273 students that were in homeschool. So we started this year with 233. That's after child find. That's after graduation, people moved out. And we find everybody. We have to find all 273 students and make sure they're still in homeschool if they've moved. When we go through that, we found 233, the ones that graduated, the ones that moved on to different areas. Since the start of school, we've had 41 students withdraw to homeschool. We've had 10 students returned to us. Two of them have left and returned of those 10. And so currently, on 317s, excuse me, 37, we had 264 students in homeschool. So as a point of reference, I just want to talk about a couple things. Out of those 264 students, I'm going to classify three generic groups. We have one group that does a really good job of what they're doing. We have a second group that does a good job, but they probably could use some supports. Then we have a third group that probably needs a lot of supports. Let's put it that way. The other thing that I want you to understand, out of that 264, it's a little fluid, but it's 264 on a given day. We could have more, we could have less as a whole year. We had 264 students for the entire school year. We basically lose about $3,800, $3,981 in seat funds. So this year alone, we've lost $1.050 million in seat funds, with students lost, okay? As another point of reference for you to understand, when I came into this position, there were 350 students out in homeschool. So we reduced the number by about 90 students. We'll apply that by $4,000 to give you an idea of, we've made some improvements on that. Not a lot of things to try to do that, but we still have students that are leaving us to homeschool as evidence that are moving now. So this is something that first year of business, I've been manufacturing stuff for 26 years, we fought for pennies sometimes. So when we had opportunity to bring back $4,000 a student, this is something that really intrigued me. And so we've been thinking about this for a while, and Mr. Brown gave us the permission to start this, and that's why we started this year. And that's where we are at this point. Any questions on the numbers?
So when I think about new projects and new programs, we've been very fortunate that Mr. Brown has given us the green light to go forward and to move forward to educate all Nelson County students in all Nelson County homes. But I always have in the back of my mind, Ms. Breeding, when she came on board, and she was very energetic and very point-blank, I want more opportunities for kids. So that is something that I always keep in the back of my mind when we do something new. Robbie and I and Amber Godey have traveled across the state, north, south, east, west. We had another project that's going on, on Thursday of this week. But we've been going around talking to folks who have sought this exact avenue of revenue in their districts. We have blended those to fit what we need here in Nelson County. And what I'm going to talk to you about is a pilot program, similar to when I bring things to you so that you have all of the upfront knowledge, and we can watch it grow and watch... and watch the data accumulate. So this is the presentation with just the beginning of what we think will fit in Nelson County. Now, we will adjust this as it goes along, as we gather data, and as we can make better decisions, knowing what really takes place here in Nelson County. But as of right now, we're going to call this program the Sigma Flex Program. It will accept students from kindergarten through 12th grade, whose parents would like to home school with some education oversight, and also be able to participate in some extracurricular activities. Extracurricular activities are not athletics, they are extracurricular activities, let's say band, let's say some things like along that line, not athletics, this is extracurricular activities. Coursework would be delivered primarily digitally, however, students must attend seminars, participate in math testing, and possibly could even do K-Prep testing, that will be seen at a later date. The learning plan would utilize Apex as we have it right now. We are moving from Apex to the Plato learning platform in July this year. Plato is a more rigorous stepping stone of digital platform. Our goal in the end is Summit Learning, that's where we're going in two or three years, but we need to make this change over to Plato, so that we have a more rigorous learning environment for our students. The students would work at their own pace, they would visit in person, by phone, they could Skype, or they could go through Google Classroom. We will have a teacher that would be available for them to contact. Students must meet face-to-face with an instructor at least twice per month, and they will graduate not with the Nelson County diploma as we know it now. Nelson County, you have in your board policy, and I think it's a grand policy, that we must have 25 credits to graduate. That is three more than the state requires. So, our Nelson County diploma would stay intact. We would do a Nelson County Sigma diploma, which would only require 22 credits, that's down the road, that's a vision, that's nothing that we're doing right now. We will never replace the human-to-human connection, I'm a firm believer in that, as I've done at the post-secondary level, the online coursework, and we're doing some Google Classroom now, but you can never take away that relationship that the student has with their teacher and the teacher has with that family. So that's not a proposal there that I want to make, but it will be based on a digital platform. The reason we can do this is because of performance-based credits. Students may complete coursework by demonstrating proficiency in lieu of completing seat time, which is a primary requirement under the traditional Carnegie unit system. In the information, in paper that I gave you, I define those Carnegie units and how that's calculated. Right now, in Nelson County, we see proficiency is 80%, mastery is 80%, passing in Nelson County is 60%. That is with our seat time classes, I would see no difference in this learning platform. The Kentucky Academic Standards outline the standards, our Playtex courseware, Plato courseware, and Apex courseware is aligned to standards, so we don't have to worry about that. Standards for elective courses are determined by the local district, and you have already determined that, so that is already in policy. Any authorized coursework that constitutes satisfactory demonstration of learning in any high school course approved for performance-based credit is consistent with the Kentucky Administrative Regulation. Credit recovery is consistent, their online coursework, initiative cooperative learning, and other school and community experiences would all be a part of this program as well. We don't expect any less of these students, they are still held to high standards of rigor. Attendance is not a requirement of the performance-based credit. Credit determination is outcome-oriented, as in, did they achieve mastery, did they achieve proficiency? And then the performance-based policy would be set by the school district, and it specifies if and how participation in a performance-based course will be verified. And it can be the seminar, the face-to-face appointments with the teacher, the online math testing, those kinds of things. We have visited Corbin, Barron County, we are visiting Barron County on Thursday, we have been to Corbin, Jefferson County, Adair County, Marion County, and we've also been to Ileet Academy, which is a combination of Tremble, Gallatin, Grant, Owen, and Carroll County, to see how their models work. So we have had a really good visit around to many schools in Kentucky to get their best ideas to put it, to make it our idea. Funding is all or nothing in the performance-based credit arena, it's based on demonstrated proficiency at the end of the course. If the student does not demonstrate proficiency, the district will receive no funding. So at that 80%, we would have to make sure that they do the proficiency piece or the passing piece, the 60%. If the student demonstrates proficiency, the district will receive the same amount of funding as if the student were in attendance in that course for the entire term of the course. So that's what performance-based credit, those are, that's the two things with the funding. Proposal that we would like to make to you for the pilot program, we would target no more than 10 students in middle and high school, that's combined. Some students would be present in a school, others are not. The district, the parents, and the students would share a very close relationship. All students would have access, access to a certified teacher from 8:00 to 5:00 on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We would have that time that the students could be with a teacher. We would have a blended learning model, online and face-to-face, when they would meet with their teacher. And data will be gathered from March 1st through May 25th, is the last day we're in school. We have begun to gather some data already with some students that we are looking at. The future work to come that I would like to bring to you in the future, this is future, remember, future work. A differentiated diploma for our Nelson County graduates. We would have an ongoing review of the data, I would bring the data back to you monthly so that you can see how we're progressing. We would change the learning platform from Apex to Plato in July of 2018. We would have a classroom that would be dedicated somewhere in the district to this Sigma Flex Program. We would have year-round learning opportunities, learning would never stop in Nelson County. And then we would increase our co-op, our internships, apprenticeships, dual credit, field and seminar experiences, and additional career pathways. And I will tell you that we have just been awarded the new career pathway from KDE, we got word on Friday afternoon that we are one of the districts that has gotten that, for both of our high schools and ATC as well as Horizon. So, we have been seeking new opportunities for our students, and I think KDE and others are taking notice of that, and we do have that approved as of Friday. So, what I would like to do is to bring this to you, and now you can...
I'll do just a couple of things, just jotting down what she was going through and I was thinking, so, the cost of the pilot program's nothing. We're going to do this out of volunteer work and make it, get through this, doesn't cost you anything, doesn't cost anybody anything, just our time. We're talking about extracurricular activity, KHSAA governs ninth to 12th grade, can't place for us, that's driven by KHSAA, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that's not us making that decision. Want to reiterate about performance-based, performance-based is different than seat time, Kim explained that. We don't collect anything until the end, so there's no money coming in until the end. If they pass the class, then we get money. If they have seven classes, we get seven out of the seven, money, 100%, if they pass six, six out of seven, we get six, seven, seven money. So, for a point of reference, if we were able to bring 10 students back into this program, and they passed all seven credits, we're talking about 10 times 4,000, it'd be $40,000 in performance-based money we would receive at the end of the year. If they only passed half the credits, we would bring back in $20,000 for the 10 students. So if we bring in 20 students, $8,000 or $40,000, now we're starting to pay for a teacher. So, the whole concept here is that if we bring in about 20 students and only pass half the credits, we're still going to pay for the teacher. So, we're helping the kids, we're also building the program, and I hope that we'll win the rest of the state beyond 20 students.
Close to questions?
Okay.
So, but currently, our KDA is at 25 credits to graduate?
Yes.
Okay, why would we reduce it to 22 for this program?
This program, not initially, but in the future, what I see is that it would target and/or appeal to students who are 18-years-old and could have 17, 18 credits, and their time is running out. They don't want to stay any longer, they would go for the diploma after their graduation date, finish in the summer, and move on. Those would be the students that I think this would appeal to.
Another thing we're looking at too, when we looked at Jefferson County, we talked about Babel, we talked about the other schools, this is sort of differentiation that they have as well, 22 credits versus some higher number. Again, it's a motivating factor to help push these kids through the rest of the way and not drop into the GED route, which is extremely difficult even for someone who's passed, asked to be quite honest with them.
So, but you had mentioned that this pilot program would consist of 10 students from middle school and high school?
Yes.
So if you're targeting some of those middle school students, I mean, obviously, they have plenty of time to be able to, to gain those 25 credits versus 22. I just don't want to sell the kids short, you know?
So let me tell you about a middle school student who will qualify. We have some middle school students who have made mistakes and who have been placed at Horizons for the rest of the school year, as opposed to being in a home school. We have some students who need an alternative placement, and that placement could be at home, because that cannot function with the regular school environment. So those students would be the students that I would target for this program, not a credit-bearing course, but students who are having some social issues, students who are having some behavior issues that are not able to function in the regular classroom. Certainly not a student that would need a regular courses, but students who would need their seventh-grade coursework, or their eighth-grade coursework, or their sixth-grade coursework, who cannot function in the environment where they need to be, but we can put them in an alternative environment and they can function this way. It keeps them from losing a year of school.
Think another thing too, I'm sorry, echoing on some of the things, is that, just as we lost 41 kids and we had 10 kids come back, because we're going into this program, it doesn't seem that they can't work their way back in, if that's what they want to do. This is an alternative pathway, they can go here, they can go here, they can go here. Yes, as Kim explained, if we would love for them to be in the regular classroom, then we would like to go to the academy, give them back a recovery. Then we have a Twilight Program. This is another layer to try to keep them involved in the school and help them graduate so they stay recognized for the program.
Since, since our district policy says 25 credits, would we have to adjust that policy?
We would have to create some additional diplomas, which I would like to do anyway, so I would bring that information to you when we get to that point to talk about actual diplomas.
Okay, we're not, all we're asking for is a pilot to do it. What you've got to look at, and Mr. Hawkinsmith and I have talked about this, from a financial angle and everything, we, if we have 260x number of kids that are home schooled, the state says approximately one-third of those kids are parents who, for religious reasons, other things, are actually doing it on a bona fide way. The state says approximately a third lies somewhere in the middle, but then approximately a third, which we're looking at somewhere close to 100 kids, that are either dodging truancing, or potential dropouts, and they do this, they, they take home school as a way of not being harassed by the sheriff's office for that. Our main focus in the beginning would be that, that group of kids. You know, we have no intentions of interfering with parents who are really doing true home schooling, have none whatsoever. Well, we've got a third of that, let's say 100 kids, that are out there just floundering around, that we need to get back into school, and this is a way to maybe encourage that. You know, we may have some that come back for this and end up back in regular school, who's to say? But we want to get them back, and let's be, you know, if we get, if we get 100 kids times $4,000, that's $400,000 to the, for the system, you know, if in purely a financial state, we need to look at this. But, the whole point of doing this is to touch a group of students that are out there that we're not servicing, that no one's servicing.
I know you, I think you've got some more questions, but I want to ask on to the end of this train of thought here some, I want to make sure, one I heard, because your question about the 22 versus 25, I want to make sure I heard right, that like Babel, which is Barron County Schools, and Jefferson County's Virtual School, it, that is a typical scenario where that school district, if it's a, I'll call it a traditional student, that is in the classrooms of Barron County High School, for instance, they may have a 25-credit hour requirement for graduation, but in the Babel, their alternative learning method, it may be 22. Is that what I heard you saying?
That's what we've said, yes.
Okay. So, so then there is already kind of precedence for that differentiation piece there. The other thing I'm wondering is, so, you know, whether it's that, whichever third that it might be, I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the third, that it are the parents, because I've got some good friends that they homeschool their family.
Right.
And they do a great job at it, but also, I've heard her talk about certain courses that now she is challenged with, with her extremely brilliant son, and how is she going to be able to meet his needs?
You know, we could bring, a student could choose to come in and take a class in calculus, or band, or theater, or something like that, and we would draw the ADA for one-seventh of each period, you know, for a period, we have seven periods, so we could draw that. That could be another avenue for, to provide some services to the, the home school people that are actually accomplishing what they want to accomplish.
And that's where I was going.
That's why it's called blended.
That, that is also one of the, not only is it that we're trying to meet the needs of that bottom third, of giving them that opportunity to have a chance at further success in life, but also for those students that are just flourishing in their home school environment, but for whatever reason, maybe it's a calculus class, maybe it's an AP course or whatever, that they want to then get college credit.
Dual credit.
Exactly. So we can hit on both ends of this through a program such as this, so, but to try and figure out how the mechanism works, it sounds like they're wanting to do a pilot for the remaining three months of the school, roughly three months of the school year.
And we've identified one child that meets the criterion that you're talking about right there.
Of the ones where the parent is saying, "We don't have the resources to educate this particular subject area, we need help." So, it sounds a little bit like, you know, with Babel and a lot of those type of alternative learning scenarios, I think Babel, one of their claims to fame is the student that never set foot in their district because they were a world-class equestrian that was traveling the world, but they were taking classes through Babel and were going to be graduating from Barron County High School.
There's several, this is exactly what you said, there are two or three of the world-class gymnasts, female gymnasts, who have done the exact same thing that we're talking about. I don't think we have that, but, you know, that would be, but we would have the...
The opportunities for students that do need something different, that sitting in that classroom does not necessarily meet the needs for them.
And it's a win-win because it would, it potentially will pay for itself, and, you know, we're not doing anything that, you know, that we would come back and bite us or, or whatever, we're not going to cost us a lot of money, we're doing this on the free, just to see how it would work, come back this summer and say, "Here's our data that we collected."
Well, we're doing things to meet the needs of the students and the community.
And when they graduate, then they graduate as if they were just like a regular graduate, so the, the point falls the same value?
Well, that's, that's, now, let me say something too, 90.9%, 99% of kids want to say they graduated from Thomas Nelson High School or Nelson County High School. You know, the, you know, there'll be, people will know, and within a few, this is different, this is a different program. Is it legal? Absolutely. Does it meet state requirements? Absolutely. It's a plus to have that, you know, with... It's a plus to have that, you know, with it, you know, and some of these homeschool students graduate from their own homeschool, but most of the universities and state colleges don't accept that.
Yeah. And I'll use an analogy of that, whenever I was at the University of Kentucky, there was a course I had to have that it didn't meet into my semesters that I was trying to get all in, so I went to Eastern and I took the course from Eastern. Now, in those days, literally, I had to drive to Eastern. In today's time, I would just be doing a flex scenario, doing online, maybe touching base with that college instructor at Eastern, but my diploma would still say University of Kentucky. So in a case like this, it could be a homeschool parent, you mentioned, there's one of them, that they need some very accelerated course. That may be the only thing that student ever gets from us. They may graduate with that homeschool diploma, or they may end up trying to pursue down the avenue of this Sigma Flex as we work on it, and they may then have a Nelson County School Sigma diploma if that's kind of how it plays out.
Yes.
Ms. Berry.
Okay, the other thing I was thinking, you're talking about kids that's homeschooled, that we have a co-op somewhere in this county that they had 35 kids, and I've said this before, they came in second in the state of ROBOTS. I watched the competition at the State Fair. I didn't know those kids existed. If you could gather up even those kids that want to be on an academic team or those kids that want to excel in other ways other than athletics, they'll have a chance to do it.
Talking about music, extracurricular for music.
Well, that's what I'm saying, music and the arts and things that you just won't get if you don't come to school, right? It's just the way it is. It sounds great.
This isn't a losing proposition, this is us meeting needs of students and the community regardless of whether they're enrolled full-time in the Nelson County Schools or they're homeschooled full-time or they're somewhere in between.
That's correct. This is just another option to the needs for the.
For kids.
Different people, different students that we have. There's different students from high school to academy to Twilight Program to the Sigma Program. This is just another option to help educate students and help them graduate with Nelson County diploma.
So as the program goes on, so let's say I'm one of those parents of a homeschooled child and I realize that I need help, with the course, do I need to pay something to the district for my child to be enrolled in the class?
Well, we haven't gotten totally.
Okay. So that's part of the pilot, is figuring out if there would be any costs.
We talked about charging like a semester technology fee, you know, or something like that.
Typically is minimal.
Like you would anyway.
Ninety bucks maybe a semester for all your classes or something like that.
Yeah, like we would when we okay that.
We need to, what we're asking is for this, the opportunity to do this five, six, seven, eight, nine students, 10 if we get that many, I doubt it, we're going to be able to service that many, but to see how it goes, to try it, and then this summer we'll be able to give the board a realistic feedback on how this went and where we see it going.
So you're, what I would call the more at-risk students, if there are things like, you know, technology needs that they don't have through their homeschool, is that something that we would provide as part of this?
We have, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
One of our pilot students we provided.
Okay.
Or.
They'll need these.
They can go to the public library, they can use their phone, they can do several different things right now, but yes, we have provided some technology and we monitor that every day or two and the student is progressing. Let me make one statement that I want you not to predict. We cannot override what goes on in the classroom. Teachers have to run this. We have to go by their syllabus. So if Ms. Smith teaches Algebra I and this is her syllabus, that's one reason I want to change to a Plato platform so that Ms. Smith can align our Plato Algebra I to meet exactly what's happening in that classroom. There can be no difference because that teacher has got to run this. That is my firm belief, I've done this before, and teachers have got to run the program. It has to be equal. What we have in our online platform has got to equal what goes on in the classroom. Exactly, there can be no difference. So that's one thing that I want you to hold me to and I want to have a partnership to hold you to that as well. Our teachers have to be involved in this and they have to prescribe the coursework for every one of these courses that we have in the Plato platform.
Because I don't want another student to think they've got less of a class learning than the one that came to school every day and graduated. Yes, I agree, I agree. Can't do that.
Same amount of rigor, same ability.
Same, ma'am.
It's not going to be easy.
Yes, same.
So with this, trying to do the pilot, I see that on the agenda, it's listed as informational, do we just need to give the go-ahead or do we actually need to do a motion in this case?
You need to give us permission to do this as a trial for the next three months.
Well, I'll make a motion.
So whether we need a motion or not, we got a motion by Ms. Breeding to move ahead with this pilot program, and Ms. Dyke will second it, all in favor. I'm opposed. We appreciate your hard work on this. We're really going to be interested in seeing this summer how things have turned out and what we can learn from it.
I'll tell you every month what was going on and how many people we have in. Rob and I are meeting with a parent on Friday around lunchtime. We're going to Babel on Thursday, so this is an ongoing project.
About five parents already are ready to go with us.
Good deal. Thank you all for your hard work. I will kind of jump in here between, Mr. Brown just pointed out to me that Ms. Genal, who is our digital learning coach, was just rushing in from another.
Do you have anyone to recognize tonight, Ms. Genal?
I do not, I do not. I've been swamped with Gmail and so.
That's fine. We just wanted to give you that opportunity.
Thank you, thank you.
And by the way, thank you for all your work with the Gmail migration, Ms. Genal. It's been going very smoothly up there.
Go ahead. Not with me, I had to have somebody else do it, sorry.
That's okay, that's just you.
That's just me, I know.
So we'll go on then to item 6C, the Associate Degree Program, and that again will be Ms. Brown. Did we use up all the batteries?
So I want to remind you of some things that we have going on. Job shadowing happened today, mock interviews, job fair, operation exposure, it's reality, all of that's going on in the next month. We also have received a grant for a summer camp that will be in collaboration with the ECTC and we'll let you know more about that. But as far as our approval of the Associate's Degree Program with Elizabeth Town Community and Technical College, I have with me today Mr. Sturgeon, Paul Sturgeon, who is, what do you do?
Dean of Retention.
Dean of Retention at ECTC. He has been an integral partner with Amber and I in creating this Associate's Degree Program. I brought to you last month the 12 criteria that our students must meet to be in the program. Mr. Sturgeon saw those and he approved of those as well. And the next thing that I will show you tonight is the recommended year and course for each of our students who is pursuing the Associate's Degree with ECTC. So this is just a listing of our coursework, when the students would begin between their freshman and sophomore year, in the summer they would take their initial orientation course and then they would move through and complete the Associate's Degree as they are a senior and we graduate them from one of our high schools. This is exactly the opposite end of maybe where we've just been, but this also, in my opinion, needs a differentiated diploma. We will be giving, we will be certifying that the student has a diploma, has graduated high school, while they will also have in their hand a degree from ECTC. So that would be something that we need to touch on in the future when we talk about differentiated diplomas. But this is what I would like to present to you, that our counselors put this together. Mr. Sturgeon and his group over at ECTC has looked over this and they have approved and asked him to come tonight in case you have specific questions of him or anything else that you would like to ask concerning the Associate's Degree.
Can you do this with other schools, please?
Yes, yes, we have a similar program with EC3 and Hardin County. Other school districts are talking about it, but no one has progressed as far as you folks have.
And also.
By the way, I want to say that Ms. Brown and Ms. Goody has been very good to work with and I appreciate the standards that they have built in to this also as far as not just throwing it out for every student, but to ensure that the students who get into it are students who will be able to succeed in this program.
So the courses, and looking at the last page there of the document, it kind of, like you said, Ms. Brown, it lays out, you know, each fall and spring semester from their, summer between freshman and sophomore all the way to graduation. I assume these are, in essence, the exact same course and/or they are literally the same course that students at ECTC take?
Exactly.
So, and here's where I'm going with this, I've always had this curiosity, personal curiosity in my head. So in theory then, that student may have an Associate's Degree in their hand before they ever graduate from high school because college semester is typically in the first week of May?
Ah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
They, well, they've completed the coursework.
Okay.
Okay, there is an issue of they have to have a high school diploma.
So they've checked every box except that one and as soon as they then receive that Nelson County diploma, immediately they've also got Associate's Degree in it.
That would be the plan, yes.
And they better dance across the stage, mom and daddies too, because it will save a lot of heartache and a lot of money.
And talking about that, I mean, I assume there are course fees that family would be paying just like they would now with the dual-credit class and.
Yes, textbook.
Textbook fees, yes. So are those typically a little bit less than what they might find if they were going to a four-year or possibly even to ECTC or is it the same cost?
It would be the same as what it would be at ECTC. We take deliberate efforts to try to keep those costs down for our students.
Sure.
Great. I love it.
Okay, so I don't think there's any other questions then, so we would need a motion then?
Motion. Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Breeding, all in favor? I oppose, motion passes. Thank you both for your hard work on this.
Great job.
Item number 6C, the Stop District School TIP Hotline, Ms. Brown.
So the poster on the front of the podium tells you about the Stop TIP Hotline with all of the unfortunate things that have been happening in schools over the last two or three months. We've tried to keep you in the loop as far as what our schools are doing and they've done a wonderful job in monitoring and working with our students and feeding our students what they need as far as information and working with them in a positive manner. This is one more piece that we would like to add to what we offer our students as far as if they hear, see, think, whatever, that we have a hotline in place so that those students can make that call, either in person, their parent, anonymously, it doesn't matter to me how they make it, I just want them to make it. So we have an agreement with the Kentucky Center for School Safety that we're bringing to you for your approval that we move forward with putting this program in place. Mr. Brown has requested that the DPP, and that is the recommendation of the Kentucky Center for School Safety, that Mr. Leather's would be the first person in line, and there would be three people that would be singled out to receive these calls. Myself would be number two and then the high school principals would be the third. We can take this down to the middle schools, right now we have not planned to, but if that would be the data that we get or what we need to do, we certainly can add to that. We have waited until this board meeting because we did training first and that happened in this building, in this room, on March the 5th, we had a regional meeting with the Kentucky Center for School Safety and they trained several other districts with us in this room and then we needed to make the transition over to Gmail so that we have a dedicated mailbox for this. So I bring this to you as one more thing that we can do for our students to ensure their safety.
Well, I think this is a great idea.
It doesn't cost anything.
Doesn't cost anything.
The Kentucky Center for School Safety picks up all the calls, runs it through their system, anybody that sends an email in, we could never trace the person because that's blocked at the Kentucky Center for School Safety that run out of the Murray State University campus, so it's a perfectly good way for students or anyone to send a tip in and be totally anonymous.
But this is a third party that initially picks up the call and then once that third party receives the call, is it filtered back here?
It will come directly to us.
Directly to us.
The three of us.
And it's not necessarily called, is it all by email?
It can be.
Oh, it can, okay.
It can be either way.
A phone call or an email, okay.
Text.
And they do all the advertising, Kentucky Center for School Safety does all the advertising, we see it there, and it's a great program and it is 100% free to our district.
And I think it's used by, is it 70, close to 100 school districts?
They're hoping to have 50% by the end of this year.
Okay, which would be about 85 to 90, yeah.
We have to do something. We've got to stop it, slow it down. We have to, because you know how I feel about this, I'm not very good with this still. I don't tolerate it very well, no, because my daughter, there was a problem and I do not, it's just something, because when I go to these meetings and safeties in the summer, I always bring back, as Ms. Brown can tell you, I always bring back information and it just, it breaks your heart to know that there's kids that are out there that physically and mentally cannot handle it and are doing other things to get through it or just not get through it. So whatever we can do to stop it without a delay.
How fast would this be implemented?
Um, within twenty-four to forty. Oh, twenty-four to forty hours, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Within three days for sure.
Yeah.
Beginning of next week.
That's what they said for us.
Yeah.
We don't run any technological problems, it'll be next Monday.
Gotcha. Okay, so if there aren't any more questions, we need a motion to approve our use of the Stop TIP Hotline as presented, a motion by Ms. Berry?
I'll second.
Second. The Scranton Building at Eastern has spent a lot of time there, so.
So you're familiar there. Okay, and then a second by Mr. Dickerson, all in favor? I oppose, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Item 6D, reorganization of instructional coaches and job creation, this would be Mr. Brown.
Yes, as you know, and we've been in communications over the last several months, that we're in a position, we're going to have to eliminate some of our certified and classified positions. And this district, when financial situations were good and money was readily available, had employed a little bit over nine instructional coaches for the district. And after discussions and been everyone, been Ms. Williams, Ms. Brown, Mr. Hawkinsmith, everyone's been involved in this with the, looking at ways of reducing, we need to cut as we've talked, approximately 1.2 million dollars out of this year's budget to meet the guidelines for next year. And one of the things we're going to have to cut is in this area of instructional coaches. But we still have needs and we still have things in the district that we need to make sure that we cover. I sent you all the basic of what it's going to be, where it's essentially eliminating 50% of those jobs. So we'll be down to approximately four and a half positions. Basically, for instance, on the leadership team, we considered the, we considered the instructional coaches part of the leadership team. At Boston, we reduced from three and a half to three. At New Haven, we're recommending a reduction from four to three and that would put Boston and New Haven, which are approximately the same size school, same type, K through eights, on equal footing and stuff, we have. type, K through eights, on equal footing and stuff. We have, we have recommended that we hire one instructional coach that would serve both high schools, and one instructional coach that would serve both middle schools, meaning OKH and Bloomfield Middle School. And then we would also look to do some things with Foster Heights, Coxus Creek, and Bloomfield Elementary. Now, the only two schools in this that did not see a reduction in number of students are Coxus Creek and Bloomfield Elementary. So we're basically keeping their leadership team at the same level. Now, I do have a little change in Coxus Creek that I'll explain in just a second, but at Foster Heights, we're reducing to half, hoping that we can come up with some title money to help them reduce, add that back up a little bit at Foster Heights. At Coxus Creek, we have well over 400 students, and we have a situation where we're not reducing the, we're not reducing the amount of leadership team at Coxus Creek or recommending it at all, but we do want to change just a tad, because the large, you know, it's a larger school, and the principal has very little help as far as doing teacher evaluations and a lot of the things that only a certified assistant principal could do. So while we're not reducing the leadership team number, we're changing, we're asking you to change it, and it would be a 50% instructional coach and a 50% assistant principal. It's not costing the district, but half the normal elementary assistant principal supplement to that, so we're right at that four and a half area. So we're reducing approximately 50% of our instructional coachings across the district. I'm not, it's not what I want to do, however, in our discussions that we've had, you all understand that we have to do some, we do have to do some reductions, and I felt that it was better that I recommend the reductions and I take the hit for doing it than strapping the new superintendent when they come in and having them have to do all those cuts. Now, that does not eliminate the new superintendent to adding things back if there are possibilities to do that and money becomes available. So that's, as I informed you all, like, what was it, about 10 days ago with that, when I sent you some emails on that, that's what's going to be my proposal, and that is, we have met with the instructional coaches. We have a plan, in fact, in place to how to proceed. We met with principals and stuff, and basically, they understand where we are, why we're having to do this. Questions?
Yeah, so setting aside, of course, I mean, we've had lots of talks, and Mr. Hocken Smith led us through in January with the dim outlook on budget situations, not just Nelson County, I mean, it stayed right. But setting all that to the side, I mean, I think isn't one of the other driving factors, we have a date where we have to say these positions will not be removed, and we've got to meet that date, and that is April?
Well, the state changed that to in May, but we felt like, and Mr. Hocken Smith and I talked about it quite along, that we felt like it was only fair and...
To give as much lead time as possible.
To our people, to let them know. So our plans right now, which include these coaches and these positions, and the teachers that are losing their positions, and next month, I'll also go into what we're doing here on the board, the central office level, as far as eliminating some positions. But we will, our plan is to, the principals already know what's going on. They've made their recommendations. They'll be talking to their staffs, and we will officially hand out those letters on April the 13th, which the cut date used to be April 15th, but that's on a Sunday, so we'll be doing it on the Friday, I hate to say Friday the 13th, but...
But it sounds like what you're saying, though, is by doing that now, it gives, if that educator, they want to pursue something in another district, they could...
And none of our, none of our coaches are losing a job.
Right.
They all have been here multiple years, and most of them have tenured and stuff, but not everyone, I mean, one is not, they've been here more than a couple of years, so...
But like you also said, that doesn't mean, which this does happen a lot of years, in that there are some non-renewals that happen.
That's correct.
Or even, even at times, I can remember, there have been some tenured staff that were not renewed because of cuts, and they were low of the tenured staff, but I think what you said was that the superintendent that comes in, there's all, a lot of times there are opportunities for those positions to be hired back, depending on what the budgets look like. That's the primary piece of that.
That's correct. And, you know, the worst thing that I can think of that I would do in this interim was strap the new superintendent with a budget that is, we know we can't meet, and a situation where we know that they're going to have to come in here and start being a hatchet, and that's not a fair thing to do. So, you know, it's not, don't get me wrong, I'm not enjoying this at all, but it's something that has to be done. This district has, we did have fewer students, and fewer students mean less teachers, et cetera, and we're cutting from the central office down, which you all are aware of also, and we'll be going through the schools. It affects everything. It even affects, we, we had a bus driver retire during the year. We eliminated, Mr. Hocken Smith got with them, they eliminated that bus route. Just, we've done everything we can do to reduce costs, but the main reoccurring cost of any school district is personnel, and there's just no way around this without reducing the number of employees.
Well, and we've had, I mean, I'll try not to get on my soapbox again, but we've had the conversations before in the past, and whenever it comes to this budget, once again, it seems like the legislature is continuing to push the cuts down on public education. They're continuing to justify the funds somewhere to raise local taxes. Whenever we continue to read, whether it's online in news or social media or whatever, that the legislature doesn't want to step up and make hard decisions themselves, so they're forcing all the hard decisions to happen down here at the local level. Whether it's you, Mr. Brown, having to take the hit for eliminating some positions to keep us financially in the good, or whether it's the school board having to make a decision to raise local taxes because the funding is not coming from the state anymore. That's as far as I'll go on my soapbox on that one. The, so the only other question I've got is, you talked some about assistant principals. I know that last summer, I think it was, maybe in June, we did some work on modifying one of our policies that dealt with the number of principals at each school level depended upon size, and I'm wanting to make sure that we don't make changes here that would then go against those policies that were put in place.
But what I'm requesting is the creation of a .5 principal, and the number of students at Coxus Creek meet that requirement.
Okay, that meaning that the enrollment of the students there already with what languages in the policy would meet that?
That is my understanding, yes. So that's what I'm asking you to, the coaching reorganization, you've, it's already part of the system, but the, what I'm asking you to create is the point is, we're having a person that's a full-time coach, and we're going to call it .5 AP, .5 instructional coach, that will allow that person to help his victory with some things that only a certified person can do that.
Okay. So in this one here, then, we would just need a motion to approve the creation of that .5 assistant principal position for Coxus Creek Elementary.
I'll make motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Item seven on the agenda, student and shareholder engagement. 7A being all minutes. Any, the guest comment policy of the district, any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. I'll start out here by turning it over to Mr. Chip McKay, who's the board attorney, that also has a comment statement to read.
It is not a guest comment. It's just, this is regarding an open meetings issue. I just wanted to bring this into the record. At the beginning of the special call meeting on February 20th of this year, for a student discipline matter, it was not publicly stated that the closed session was being conducted pursuant to KRS 618101F for student discipline hearing. Now, all this information was provided in written form in the meeting notice. It was a technical violation of the Open Meetings Act because it wasn't read out loud. And so it was also brought to our attention that a printed version of the meeting notice was not posted here in this building, which is also required by the act. So we have requested that all future special call meeting notices be printed and posted in the front lobby. So that's how we will remedy those issues.
Appreciate that, Mr. McKay, and I know that you and I have had conversations to make sure that we ensure that those KRS references are read. Adam, like you said, was an inadvertent one by myself, but that also, since especially we've got several probably special call meetings coming up over the next month with the final steps of this superintendent search process, we want to make sure that we have those posted out front on the door as well, or wherever the special call meeting is held.
Yeah, wherever, whatever building the meeting is in, we'll have to post it in a conspicuous location. We'll make sure that's done.
Appreciate it, Mr. McKay. Thanks for your help. So while that was sort of a guest comment, are there any other guest comments? Anybody that would like to make a comment according to the guest comment policy?
Good evening. My name is Amanda Noakes. I live at 1023, excuse me, Riverbrook Drive in Coxus Creek. Before I begin, I come to you first and foremost today as a parent, secondarily as an employee of our great community, and I'm speaking today as a representative of some teachers from Thomas Nelson High School to include the Special Education Department. As a community member, teacher, and parent, I'm optimistic about the decision with which you've been entrusted. I come to you today as an informed constituent to reiterate the values and qualities discussed by the community at the forum in the fall. To begin, in education, we often talk about that which can be quantified as marked indicators of success. We assign scores, grades, and levels based on numbers. You see, in education and academia, we like statistics. We find comfort and confidence in percentages. However, in this most important of decisions, I urge you to look at what qualifies our next leader. Qualities like community, infinite care, and love for our students do not fit neatly onto a chart or graph, yet are powerful qualities that we deem as imperative in our next superintendent. We need a leader who continues to question the status quo so that we may all grow in our ability to educate our children. We need a leader who says we can do better for our children, a leader who pushes us all to learn more, do more, and be more for our community. A visionary with a plan who continues to reevaluate and redefine what success is so that each child entrusted in our care understands they have the power to craft the future they want. Teachee summarizes it best. "The essence of leading is not commanding," he says, "but teaching. It is opening people's eyes and minds. It is teaching them new ways to see the world and pointing them to new goals." We need a great leader, a great teacher to lead, not only the students, but the community into the direction of continued self-reflection and growth. We need a leader who inspires through vigilant programming to support our children holistically, but who also believes in allowing schools to craft their own identities. In light of recent events in our country, it is clear that our society is hurting. We are in search of a leader who will enter into a dialogue of care for ourselves and care for others. We seek leadership and guidance from someone who will empower us to go beyond the dissemination of content standards and empower us to nurture the hearts of our students. We need a leader who continues to destroy the incorrect notion that schools aren't the cornerstone of our community. We need a leader who extends all of branches in all directions so we have complete saturated community engagement at all levels. We need someone who changes those who think of them as, quote, "their kids" or, quote, "my kids" to it always being about our kids. Rear Admiral Grace Hopper is attributed with stating that the most dangerous phrase in the English language is to say, "We've always done it this way." Never has that phrase been more dangerous than in education. We need a leader who values the voice of community stakeholders and who inspires our students to lead and who empowers our teachers to be lifelong learners. We ask you to shatter any preconceived notions and ensure that our next superintendent will forge new roads to success and decline taking any prefabricated pathways with our children, our future, and our most precious commodities. We trust you to make this decision and to ensure our community and children are the driving force behind your selection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other guest comments?
Sorry.
You're just quicker.
Hi, my name is Misty Roller, located at 118 Four Seasons Drive in Coxus Creek, Kentucky. First, I'd like to thank you for continuing to create a space with community voice to strengthen Nelson County schools. I come before you tonight as a parent, a community member, a former business leader, with a few comments regarding the superintendent position. I follow the community forums, and it was pointed out how important thinking outside the box is and the power of innovation in Nelson County schools. As a parent and community member, I want to reiterate the importance of innovation for our kids tonight. This decision is about kids, their future, the future of our community. When we make this decision about kids, we must look for a candidate with a vision for the future that will strengthen our community as a whole. Additionally, as a former business leader in the corporate world for 12-plus years, I want to remind us all about the importance of results. In business, if you don't produce results, you don't get to keep your job. As we look at candidates for our superintendent position, their results are the most important reminder and indicator of what they are doing for kids. If they're not getting strong, recognizable results in another district or school, that speaks volume of their leadership. In the end, this decision could have a tremendous impact across our community for decades to come. Or we could be in the same place four years from now. My children, my grandchildren, while away, will be impacted by this decision, and I believe with the right hire, we can impact not only their future, but the future of our community and our economy 10, 20, 30 years from now. Barstown's known to be the most beautiful small town in America. We're known for bourbon. It's my desire that we are to be known for a creative and innovative school district as a whole. I want to say thank you to the selection committee. You did a fantastic job establishing the community forums to allow community members to voice their concerns and their wishes for our next superintendent. We've trusted these six individuals to be our voice and make a recommendation based on what is best for our kids and which ultimately is best for our community. I ask you, as a board who was elected by our community members, to make a decision that truly represents the district you represent. Thank you.
As the next walks up, are you related to the Roller juggernaut?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't have that memorized.
No, because I've had the pleasure of watching them come out Bloomfield Middle School the last few years, the success they've had in Vegas.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Matt Bulka. I live at 103 Nashville Drive in Coxus Creek. So I'm a chemistry teacher at Thomas Nelson, and I want to talk to you about the blended learning stuff you guys talked about tonight. I know we initially talked about piloting as a program for new kids for their sphere and using it for homeschooling. the year and using it for homeschooled kids. I think it's a great thing to use for all of our kids. I started a program this year in my classroom where, at the beginning of the year, all my assignments were made, my kids have choice, they have, they work at their own pace, they do everything online, just like the program that we were talking about, and although I think they hated it at first, and you can ask, I'm sure they definitely did, because some of the parents in the audience, I think it's really the best thing for them. After they leave our walls, they, that's how they're, they're going to learn the rest of their lives. My dishwasher, my oven broke, I figured it out using YouTube or the internet. Sorry. I think it's great. I know right now we're looking at students with special circumstances. As a teacher, I know all of my students have special circumstances. So it should be, it should be available to all of them. I have a kid in my homeroom who, as a junior, is out of math classes to take. So that could be something that he could look at next year. If we have a kid that wants to be a journalist and they get an internship opportunity or something, they should be able to take high school on the road with them wherever they go and where their life leads them. I know, we, we keep saying you can't replace what you get in the classroom, but for me to think that I know what's best for my kids and on a daily basis they should be learning what I think they should learn is just arrogant. So I think providing them with the options and choices and ability to learn more and more things and tailor their education to them, I think is the greatest thing we could do for them, and as we look to plan for the future of this district, it's the best thing we can invest in. Thank you.
Ms. Brown and Mr. Leathers, I think you've got to volunteer for the program.
My name's Sean Brolle, I live at 750 Destin Drive in Coxus Creek. I have a little girl, goes to Bloomfield Elementary, and I'm sure everybody's aware of what happened in Maryland this morning. So the question I have is, what is being done? Y'all talk about budgets, but when it comes to kids' safety in school, there is no better. So my question is, what is going on to prevent this from happening? Because I'm not naive enough to think it can happen here.
So, Mr. Brown, I don't know if at some point it might be good to, we've talked about high-level things, but maybe if there's an opportunity to sit down and have a one-on-one conversation or-
Well, I mean, one lady brought up the hotline.
The salt tip line.
Yeah, the hotline doesn't stop bullets. So that's my question, what is, what is being done to protect our children in school?
Well, we have, we have, we have had meetings with both Nelson County Sheriff's Department, and we've had meetings with the Bardstown City Police. We also are having a meeting, you know, it's good being set up with the Kentucky State Police to look at the different synopses. We had the Kentucky Center for School Safety come and do a look at, they've done about seven of our schools right now, are going to do all of them, to give us some recommendations on that. We aren't just sitting back not doing anything.
I didn't mean it that way.
No, no, I know you didn't, but I, but a lot of it now is not evident, I guess is the right way, it's kind of behind the scenes, and we are going, we are putting together some plans and some things and, you know, it's, you know, it's-
I know it's a sensitive subject, people don't want guns in school, but when you talk about sheriff's office or police officers, I mean, Bloomfield Elementary, Bloomfield Middle, with a vehicle floored, you're good for 10 minutes. I mean, these situations end in three to four minutes. That's not good enough. I mean, there need to be people in place and need to, that know how to handle these situations. And locking doors, that's not a solution.
No, it's not. And again, Ms. Brown, I think you've had a conversation with another parent on a similar topic about a week or so ago.
Yeah.
I mean, I would suggest, I would encourage you in fact, you know, find a time that you and Mr. Brown can sit down, have a little bit more conversation, because I think some of what you're getting at can be explained, not explained to alleviate all the fears, but to be shared, some of the things other than like what, what maybe we think of as a police officer flooring it, like you said, from Bardstown-
I mean, I know on a federal level, there's a lot of talk, there's a lot, I mean, the governor's been in DC, there's a lot of talk, a lot of bills being passed in different places about having SROs in schools. Thank God there was one in Maryland, I mean, unfortunately, people were hurt.
Yes.
But a lot more could have been hurt if he had not have been.
That's correct.
And he was a SWAT officer, you know, that came out, he's not just an SRO, he's also a SWAT, a SWAT team officer that knows how to handle that situation.
And I don't want to be political in this, but this governor has not, has taken every dollar out of school safety in this budget, there is, he's put zero dollars into school safety. He has not funded the SRO program, although he's been asked to do it on numerous occasions. So, we're not getting, and that, that doesn't answer you, I just want, that's-
I'm not politically either, I'm not a fan of things, but he has armed guards around him.
Yes.
That's my whole point. I know gun issues are a high topic, whether you're for them or whether you're against them, but when it comes to this, budget goes out the window. I don't, it means nothing to me. Find a way to make it happen.
What I, what I ask, if you, I know you said your, your name and your address, I mean, if you wouldn't mind at some point giving Ms. McKay a phone number or an easy way to get in touch with you, and that way then, Mr. Brown, you're able to give him a call-
I'll give you a call.
And you can sit down and have more conversations about that.
I promise.
Appreciate it, thank you. Any other guest comments?
Good evening, I'm Kim Houston, 106 West View Drive, Bardstown. As most of you all know, that I am the president of the Economic Development Agency here at Bardstown, but actually tonight I just want to speak as a former Nelson County graduate and someone who's looking ahead to the future, though lots of things I'm going to say, we'll be talking about the future of our workforce. As you know, we've, we've been doing pretty well in economic development, our unemployment rate is at the lowest level ever, and we were fortunate three years ago to bring together all the school systems into a work-ready program. We were able to get our industries and our school systems together and to talk about the future and what we're going to do and what that next skilled worker looks like. And so when you all are searching for your next superintendent, I'm hoping you're going to ask those hard questions. What do you know about the community? What do you know about our industries? What do you know about career relevance education and how we're going to get these students who may not be going to college, but on a career path? Amber Godey is a wonderful addition to what you all have done here, and I'd love to see that happen in, in other schools as well, too. We're embarking on a strategic plan. We already put the Bardstown School System on this committee, we put Mr. Wes Bradley on the committee, we put Mr. Jeremy Vuer on the committee, and we're going to be working with Amber on that, too. We're bringing again our, our workforce in schools together to see how we're going to grow Nelson County and how we can get those skilled workers to go right in our, our workforce. We're going to be probably hiring about 200, 300 jobs over the next couple of years, and we need to make sure we have the skills to be able to have those jobs. So when you do start the, your superintendent search, I'm really hoping that you think about that. Think about the people who have a knowledge of our community, have someone who has the knowledge, who have worked with industries before, and have a knowledge of workforce development. And that's going to be so important to the next five or 10 years for what I'm going to do and for the future of Nelson County. And you all have a big job ahead of you, and I want to wish you all the best of luck, and I'll look forward to working with whoever you hire, very much so. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Sheila Pfeifer, 1370 North Stillwell Road, Boston. I've had three kids go through Thomas Nelson, they're done now. I have two there now, and I have one coming up. I cannot say enough good things about Mr. Bradley, who I hope he will consider highly for the superintendent job. For the last five years, I've been watching around the county and everything that Mr. Bradley has implemented at Thomas Nelson has been trickling around the county to all the other schools. The, let's post our children who have gotten college acceptance letters, I've been watching the other schools start doing that. He knows everybody, he always comes to every child, shakes your hand, every parent shakes your hand. He has come to the Boston Oyster Stuffer and rolled oysters with the best of it. He knows the kids, he knows the community. I had a new parent come up to me at the open house this year, and they said, "Is Thomas Nelson always as happy?" And I said, "Yes, it is, it's always wonderful here." So those are a few things I love about Mr. Bradley, he's so good. And when you have teachers and educators from around the state constantly coming to your school to see what they can do better because of what you're doing there, I think that speaks volumes. Thank you.
Any other guest comments?
Okay, so- Yes, I'm sorry. It's been five years and three months that I've resisted this with every ounce of energy in my body, but I don't need to do it anymore. And you're very glad. Seems that the last few weeks I've had to talk a few people off ledges from their concerns, legitimate concerns. And I wasn't going to say anything, but looking at you all in behind, you look at that sign right there. There's a young man with his hand up now. Is he asking a question? Is he volunteering? Or is he saying, "Hey, hey?", but underneath him it says, "Expect the best." He expects the best, he is each and every one of us. He expects the best. As I was at Mural seat for 12, for eight years, 192 meetings, there were 500 to 700 people stood at this podium. One person stands out in a statement he made was, "Leaders lead." It's stuck. You're our leaders, we need you to lead. The next superintendent, he's the leader. He needs to expect the best, demand the best, and know how to get it. We expect the best. Thank you.
Any other guest comments? Be brief. Really brief.
My name is Charles Patrick, 321 South Main Harrisburg. I wanted to formally introduce myself as the new Nelson County Educational Association President. I just found out that, that last week, so I wanted to make myself known to you all and hopefully we can have a civil conversation when, if problems arise. Thank you.
So, so did you volunteer, or were you volunteered on this line?
I volunteered, says, I was handpicked. So, thank you all.
Thank you, well, we appreciate the work. Any other guest comments? Okay, I'll need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810-1-F for discussions that may lead to the appointment of an employee.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Breeding. Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.